Good morning, members. Good morning, members. I make it about ten o'clock, so if we could make a start, please. Welcome to the County Council meeting taking place on Wednesday, the twenty ninth of March, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones, please? Could I also remind members of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. As in all previous meetings, any requests to speak must be made using your voting handsets. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forwards and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist. I would also like to extend a welcome to the members of the public attending the meeting. You're very welcome to attend and observe proceedings; however, you should not disrupt the meeting. Item one, election of a chair. Could I have nominations, please? councillor Hopgood?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate councillor Joan Nicholson.
Thank you. Do I have a second, there?
Thank you. I second the nomination for councillor Joan Nicholson.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any further nominations? Can that be agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Nicholson, can you come to the lectern, please?
I, Joan Nicholson, of twelve old Blackett Street, Catchgate, Stanley, County Durham, D H nine eight L P, have been elected to the office of Chair of County Durham, of County Council, sorry, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending this morning. It's custom to say something about the outgoing chair. Beattie was my best friend, or one of my best friends. She was County Durham to the heart of her. She ate and slept County Durham. In the short time I've been doing the circuit of the chain gang, as it's called, Beattie has been held in the greatest esteem that any person could have been held. Her service to this county is just impeccable. She will be an absolute huge miss to Durham County Council and to the people who were able to call her their friend. Thank you so much. I'd like to invite group leaders to say a few words on behalf of their group members. Can I call upon Patricia Jobbling to begin?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, can I say, as far as the group goes, Beattie has left a huge hole and we are going to find it difficult to fill that. But my personal views are very deep. I met Beattie for the first time, as Richard did, after we got in for the unitary council. Beattie came out and we introduced ourselves, and from that time there was an affinity and I knew we were going to be pals. We started having coffee together, going for meals together, going away for weekends together. But we shared a history, although I'm a southerner and she's a northerner, we shared a lot in common. She left school at fifteen, I left school at fifteen, she worked in Woolworths, I've worked in Woolworths. She was brought up in a very, very poor situation, and I was the same. Two, you know, eight, there was eight of us in our house with an outside netty, and it's exactly the same for Beattie. So we had a lot of shared values. We too had shared political values, and she was fun to be with. We went to Strasbourg together, we went to Brussels, we met him gate, and she was just a laugh a minute all the way that we went. She is a lady with a huge heart, and she was kindness itself. She would help anybody. Party didn't matter when it come to helping you. Beattie was there. She loved Chesterley Street. She lived for that job. And what has happened is terribly sad, and I don't know how Gavin and I are going to fill that void, but we've got to, and we've got to carry on, and we've got to carry on for her. And I think that party differences don't come into death, I'm afraid. We all have friends that we lose, and this is going to be a loss to this council. Beattie was formidable, she was down-to-earth, she said it as it was. These are the things we've got in common, or had in common, and I am going to find this very difficult. And the one thing Gavin and I will do is support Alan through this, so I hope he knows that. So Beattie was a star, she was my friend, my pal, and my sister. We shared death together. Her sister died, my two sisters died, and all those things bring you so close. So, yes, I love that lady, and I'm going to miss her a lot. Thank you.
Can I invite the leader of the Liberal Democrat group, councillor Amanda Hopgood?
Thank you, Chair. It's only last May, but were you all supporting and supported by Beattie, the day she was in attack? It was a good choice for all of us who supported her that day. It was an honour to know Beattie, it was an honour to call her a friend, and as Patricia has already said, when it came to politics and friendship, there was no lines with Beattie. She was the life and soul of anywhere she attended. You didn't turn up and know that she wasn't there. She was an inspiration to many, and there's an awful lot of people can learn an awful lot of things for how that lady worked within her community, how she represented people, and the passion, and more importantly, the compassion that she had as a person. We've lost a colleague, we've lost a friend, but there's a family who's lost their lead. She was, and for all of us who were at Beattie's funeral last week, we saw firsthand how much that lady was loved by her husband, by her children, by her grandchildren, and that's a gap that won't be filled for anyone who has lost someone as close. They will know how that feels, and we know how that feels, stood here today paying tribute to one of the greatest councillors this chamber has seen. So, from the Liberal Democrats, rest in peace, Beattie, you will be missed.
Can I invite the leader of the Durham group, councillor Alan Shield?
Thank you, Chair. Like a lot of others, I first met Beattie at the twenty, two thousand and eighteen, sorry, twenty, two thousand and eight elections. My first impressions, like many others, that she was a very personable, a kind person with a very infectious smile, but a totally conscientious councillor who cared deeply for her area and her constituents. When I was first told about Beattie's death, I, like many others, were probably upset and distraught. But that changed later afterwards, changed to anger and frustration at God. And as a Christian, I kept thinking, why do you take good people so early? I was comforted by a colleague from the Durham Christian Partnership who stated, God has need for her, she has moved to a better place. And I would say that in a world that appears to be sometimes cruel and divisive, it was my privilege, and hopefully everybody's privilege, to consider Beattie as a friend and as a colleague. I hope that God keeps you safe, Beattie, rest in peace, you will be missed. Thank you, Chair.
Can I invite the leader of the Durham County Council Independent Group, councillor John Shropewith?
Thanks, Chair. All I can tell you about Beattie is she was dedicated to the people in Chesterley Street. She was one of them people I would call Mrs. Cannibary, that just wanted to help people. I think what I thought should be Alan and the family, and she'll be sadly missed. Thank you.
Can I invite the deputy leader of the Labour group, councillor Rob Croot?
Beattie's sudden passing came as a shock to us all, and it's fair to say that she's left a significant gap in the lives of everybody who knew her and everybody who met her. On a personal level, although our paths didn't cross that often, when I did meet Beattie, I was always left in no doubt that she had a rare ability, and that was an ability to listen. That didn't necessarily mean she agreed with everything I said, that wouldn't be true to say that, but it showed that she was prepared to listen and to accept viewpoints that she didn't necessarily share. And because of that ability, she was somewhat unique in the way she built up a strong personal relationship in her own community over many years. And in return, she was well-known and respected within that community for her warmth, her kindness, and for that ability and willingness to listen. Perhaps more importantly, though, Beattie was devoted to her family and to her friends, and she did everything within her power for her community, and that was recognised in return by the people she represented for many years. So, Chair, on behalf of the Labour group, I'd like to pass on our condolences to the family. And in these difficult times, I sincerely hope that Alan, and I know that he's hated here, I hope Alan can, and the children and grandchildren, take some comfort at least in knowing that Beattie was well-respected across the council and cared for deeply by the people and the communities that she represented over many years, which will be sorely missed by everyone who knew her. Thank you, Chair.
Can I invite the leader of the Spannymoor and Tudor Independent Group, councillor Liz
Like many of us here today, we were shocked and saddened at the sudden passing of Beattie. We were privileged to work with Beattie and have always found her to be a welcoming and friendly voice and person who had the ability to get on with everybody. On behalf of Spannymoor and Tudor Independents, we honour Beattie's life and commitment to Durham. We will miss her immensely.
Thank you. Are there any other members who wish to speak? Councillor Joyce Charlton?
Thank you, Chair. These are my words, this is how I feel about Beattie. There's lots of words and descriptions of a person that come into my head when I think of her. She was happy, she was generous, she was pragmatic, she was so funny, she was a damn good listener, she was loyal, she was given, she was compassionate, and she was very wise. I'll miss her smile, a smile that reminded me so much of my mum. Beattie was a genuine good egg. Good night and God bless Beattie.
If there's no one else registered to speak, can I invite the members to stand for a moment's silence? So we move on to the business of the day to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the twenty-second of February. Can I have a mover and a seconder?
Chair, can I move the minutes, please?
Chair, can I second the minutes, please?
Does any member have any declarations of interest to any items of business on the No declarations? Chair, colleagues, I have no announcements to make at today's meeting. We move on to item five. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Last week saw the official start of spring. As well as lighter nights and hopefully an improvement in the weather, the change of season also marks the start of our festival programme here in County Durham. Over the coming weeks and months, there is much to look forward to with an exciting line-up of events and activities for all ages and interests. First up is Bishop Auckland Food Festival, which takes place next month. The festival is always a great day out, but it also offers a fantastic boost to local businesses by attracting tens of thousands of visitors to the town. In May, we will join the country in celebrations for King Charles III's coronation, with events taking place around the county. And later in the month, Durham City will come to life as we mark the tenth annual Durham Pride. The summer will bring further fun with Brass, Durham City Run, Seum Food Festival, before we move into the autumn with the Durham Book Festival and Lumiere. I hope you will join me in making the most of our fantastic, fantastic cultural offer right across the county this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? Item six, questions from the public. We have received no questions from the public for today's meeting. Item seven, petitions. No petitions have been received for today's meeting. We move on to item eight, report from the cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report?
Chair, I'll just present the report as written in the papers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. The, no questions have been received in respect of the report. Can I ask the council to note the report? We move on to item nine, appointment of non-voting co-opted members to the Standards Committee. Can I ask the deputy monitoring officer to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. In two thousand and twelve, council agreed the membership and composition of the Standards Committee as eleven county councillors and two non-voting parish councillors. Following the death of councillor Terry Batson in November two thousand and twenty-two and the resignation of councillor Ralph Harrison in February two thousand and twenty-three, two vacancies arise for the non-voting co-opted parish councillors. In accordance with procedures agreed with the Standards Committee, the County Durham Association of Local Councils sought expressions of interest for the position from all town and parish councillors. In doing so, they circulated an information pack prepared in conjunction with the monitoring officer to explain the role and responsibilities of the Standards Committee and the co-opted parish councillors. SEDAL's executive met on the first of March to consider nine expressions of interest received. They resolved to nominate councillors Alan Doig of the City of Durham Parish Council and councillor Chris Footwood from Barnet Castle Town Council for the positions. A brief summary of their experiences included at paragraphs thirteen and fourteen of the report. Standards Committee considered the nominations on the seventeenth of March and agreed to recommend the appointment of councillors Doig and Footwood to council today, the recommendation being at paragraph seven to the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a mover for the report?
Thank you, Chair. There are a hundred and four town and parish councils within County Durham, and a significant proportion of the standards matters raised with the council's monitoring officer relate to town and parish councils. The two co-opted town and parish members therefore provide a helpful perspective to the Standards Committee when considering code of conduct matters as well as ethical governance arrangements more generally. They also play an important role sharing information between the com- They also play an important role sharing information between the committee and SEDAL membership. I am pleased to note the level of interest expressed in the role and therefore move the recommendations as printed.
Thank you. Can I have a second for the report?
Thank you, Chair. I would reiterate councillor Hobgood's comments in relation to the value that the co-opted town and parish councillors bring to the Standards Committee and the wider SEDAL membership in sharing information in relation to ethical governance. I'm aware that councillor Batson was first appointed as a co-opted member in 2012 and councillor Harrison in 2015. When considering proposals to fill the vacancies, the Standards Committee quite rightly recognised their contribution to the committee over that period of time, which was considerable. In seconding the recommendation, I echo the recognition of councillors Batson and Harrison and support the recommendation that councillors Doig and Chris Footwood are duly appointed as co-opted members to the Standards Committee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Does any member wish to speak on the report? So does the council approve the report? Thank you. Item 10, motion on notice. Councillor Michael Stead has agreed that his motion be deferred and placed on the agenda for the council meeting in June. And can I thank councillor Stead for that? Item 11, questions from members. We have received one question for today's meeting. I'll pass over to James Etherington, who will outline the procedure for members' questions.
Thank you, Chair. One question's been received from councillor Shaw. Councillor Shaw will have three minutes to put his question to councillor Rollinson, who will then respond. Councillor Shaw may then ask a supplementary question arising out of either the original question or councillor Rollinson's reply. There is no debate on questions. Thank you, Chair.
So can I invite councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. Blyth County Council submitted a bid which was successful in stage two of the levelling up and when commenting upon the Blyth bid, Michael Goof said, "Blyth Council was successful in its bid and has just secured £20 million in levelling up funding, which the government has said would transform empty homes, support jobs and tackle crime and through revitalising dilapidated housing, upskilling the next generation and cracking down on crime in this town, is finally getting the attention investment it deserves to ensure everyone thrives." Why was the bid for Blyth successful whilst the bid for Horden was not and what now will be Plan C for Horden?
Thank you, councillor. Can I invite councillor James Rollinson, portfolio holder for resources, investment and assets, to respond?
Thank you, Chair. Can I thank councillor Shaw for his question? The council cannot provide an answer for how the government decisions were made in relation to Blyth and we understand that the funding for Blyth was allocated outside of the round two levelling up process and announced as part of the spring statement. The government decision and outcome of the round two levelling up process was disappointing for our area and we have raised this with government. I would however put on record that my thanks for the council officers who worked above and beyond to put forward five bids of the highest standards into this process in a limited timescale available and seeking to deliver over a £100 million of additional investment into our area. I would also like to thank our communities, businesses, local members and MPs who supported our bids into government. I assure all here today that whilst this was a hugely disappointing outcome for County Durham and indeed for many areas that did not benefit from this round of funding, that our commitment and hard work in this process does not mean that the, and does mean now, that we have a pipeline of projects that can be considered by the council for further external funding opportunities in the future. The council cannot comment on the comparative merits of levelling up bids from other local authorities, however, we understand that no authority that was successful in round one had a successful bid in round two and that County Durham was one of these areas along with a number of others. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. So what the residents can't understand is why the coalition's been sitting on significant ring offence funding for two years allowing them to neglect to continue and now we must start again to provide a solution. And in light of what's been stated in this chamber, will the leader call for a judicial review into the government's decision to change the criteria preventing any authority successful in round one of levelling up, of accessing funding in round two, which was a decision taken by government after the round two bids had been submitted in order to recover the costs incurred by council taxpayers of County Durham?
Can I just clarify, the question was put, James won't do it?
Yeah, Chair, the question, the original question was put to councillor Rollinson, but the supplementary question was put to the leader, so in that sense it's not a valid supplementary question, Chair.
Could I interject? I understand, but I thought it would be more appropriate that the leader would be writing to the government rather than the cabinet portfolio holder. If that's not the case, then maybe the cabinet portfolio holder needs to ask for the judicial
James, it's a relevant question. If you feel you can answer it, do so. If you feel you would like a written reply, that's also fine.
Thank you, Chair. I'll answer. We'll take that forward. The cabinet will discuss any method of judicial review. Can I just say, and it's included in the original question, Horden is one of many of the Pitt villages, Easington, Blackhall, Merton, all of the X-Miling villages. The pits were closed in the 1980s and how many years is that? Forty years. This is Labour's heartland. What did Labour do then and what did they do for their communities? This is true, this is true. When Labour was in charge of the government, what, when Labour was in charge of the government and had a local prime minister in Tony Blair, what did you do then?
Councillor Rollinson. Councillor Rollinson.
Sorry, Chair.
Can we just stick, can we stick to the answer to the question? We don't need a statement, we just need an answer to the question. Councillor, I'm assuming it's a point of order?
Well, I think you clarified it for me very well, Chair, but for me, this was a political speech, which I do not think is appropriate in answer to a very valid question from councillor Shaw. Can you really clarify that again for us, please?
Councillor Guna-
A political statement with this regard is just not acceptable.
Councillor Guna have ruled on that. Councillor Rollinson was to answer the question. We'll move forward. So that concludes today's business for the council meeting. I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and media who have been watching. The broadcast will confirm it's ended. Thank you.